Good evening. We call to order this Budget Workshop of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Today, Thursday, March 10th, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. On my sheet here, I have adoption of the agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes.
The only item of our agenda, Budget Workshop.
Good evening, Council. Tonight is our second Budget Workshop, and we're going to discuss salaries, benefits, department requests, and solid waste disposal fund. Tonight's workshop includes requests over $10,000, and it doesn't include any request less than $10,000. So let's talk about the budget calendar again. The budget presentation is set for Thursday, April 7th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. A tax rate resolution will be presented on April 12th at 6:00 p.m. in a regular scheduled council meeting. We'll advertise the fiscal year '23 budget on April 17th of 2022. A public hearing on the appropriation ordinance will be held on April 26, 2022. The first reading of the budget ordinance will occur on May 10th of 2022, and the second reading and the passage and adoption of the budget should occur on May 24th of 2022. The purpose of these workshops is to aid city management in developing the budget. It gives you an opportunity to ask us questions, and we can hear your feedback, at least as it relates to what you're seeing so far. It provides you all an opportunity to set clear directives of items to be funded. This is for informative and for fiscal planning purposes only, and we're trying to keep you apprised of significant items that have come up during the budget development process. So we'll start with department requests. I brought my sheet with me tonight, since my eyes are getting better as I get older. Clerk of Council, it's an increase in the budget of $102,736,000, and that is for an electronic record-keeping system. I can tell you, based on what we've gone through over the past 15 months, having a electronic record-keeping system where all documents are scanned into one system would make life much easier as it relates to FOIA requests, and it would make life easier as it relates just to typical research that you would need. Professional services for city attorney, I've increased that by $25,000. We do have two, or we have one pending item right now of significant litigation with BVU that has not concluded at this time. We also have the potential for additional litigation with Bristol, Tennessee, that is not included, where outside counsel would need to be retained as well. And there may be an opportunity for other litigation here in the near future as well. Treasurer tax sales fees have increased by $28,500. That's for 239 parcels to be sold. This expense will, some of it will be offset with revenue that's generated. The treasurer also had bank service charges, an increase of $78,000, and that is because we did change banks this past year, and the new charges there are more than what we were previously paying. IT has two increases, one under maintenance of computers and software, and another under operating supplies and material. This is for normal IT upgrades and normal software upgrades. The cost of these items has just increased over the past year, and these are items that we need in order to stay operating efficiently within IT. There's also a $5,000 request in there for a new GIS computer. Those computers are a little bit more powerful than your typical laptop computer or your typical desktop, so it has to be beefed up quite a bit. Circuit Court Clerk has requested $10,000 to replace some flooring and wiring in the office building and the Circuit Court Clerk's office. And also, there is a grant from additional grant funds, an increase of $18,012. And the police department have upcoming TASER and camera payments, mobile units for dispatch, and replace some old radars, and that's a total increase of $58,941 from the previous budget. Next, Public Works, we've increased that maintenance of building and property by $15,000, and that's for the paving of Flanagan Drive, which is non-VDOT eligible road that would need to be repaved. Also, purchase of a bucket truck for street sign and light maintenance, that's a $100,000 increase under VDOT maintenance. VDOT maintenance as well for operational and construction equipment, that's a purchase of a hydraulic breaker for a skid steer. The school transfer, education, local appropriations, an increase of $854,968. Parks and Rec operations, maintenance of machinery and equipment, an increase of $20,000, and that's for a heat and air system replacement in the old fieldhouse, or in the fieldhouse. Also, operational and construction equipment, an increase of $24,500. That's to replace a dump trailer at Sugar Hollow, a finish mower for Parks and Rec Fields, and a general-purpose zero-turn mower. The public library, increase of $82,247. $32,500 goes to the Jones Creativity Center. $49,747 is for salaries and benefits. Community development and planning, professional services, that is for a comp plan consultant and a traffic impact analysis, and we are still in the process of determining whether or not the traffic impact analysis will be necessary, but we should have that answer before we have to adopt the budget. Code compliance, $20,000, and that's for city-funded demolition of derelict properties throughout the city. And then the contingency fund, the city manager contingency fund, an increase of $114,418 to give the $200,000 contingency fund. Other significant items that we need to be concerned about is, one is fuel costs. We can all see that the fuel costs are rising every single day. The regional jail, the cost of the regional jail will be $3.1 million. VRS retirement was an increase of a little over half a percent, not significant, but that does add up over, close to 400 employees. And workers' comp are awaiting the final rates, but it is going to increase some. So let's talk about personnel. Here are the department requests as far as personnel needs moving forward. The treasurer's requested the part-time employee to go to full-time. The police have requested the captain position be reinstated. If you all remember, John Austin, Chief Austin, requested a major position. Council granted that, knowing that they would not fill the captain position through June 30th of this year, but also council said that he would be able to have that captain position back as of July 1. A dispatcher for the police department, and that is part-time right now, and it is paid through contract services, but that needs to be a full-time dispatcher. Fire has requested an assistant fire chief and seven new firefighters. Inspections Department has asked for a new inspector, an additional inspector, and that's simply because of the significant economic development project going on out in the west end of town at this point. Streets have asked for a machine equipment operator, two of those. Those will be primarily state-funded. And have also asked for a GIS technician. Fleet Maintenance has requested two mechanics. A piece of that would be funded by the state, and then for a secretary, and the secretary, part of that is being paid for now through contract services, but they're asking for that to be increased to full-time. Building maintenance, this is not a building maintenance request, but it's a request that I've had for a couple of years, is additional custodians for the city. I've asked for two additional custodians. And a community development planner is one. As of right now, Jay Dietrich is serving in an interim role as a community development director, and he's also serving as city planner. So we will, at some point, need to be getting a city planner back into our budget at this point. There's, I don't think it's in the budget at this point, is it, the city planner? Well, the planner not, the director is not, but that would just be a reversal. Employee salary and benefit information. City employee salary increase, this does not include police, fire, or sheriffs, and that would, for a 5% raise across the board, would be $440,000. We will talk about police and fire here momentarily. The reason we have not included the sheriff's department is because there is so much movement over there right now, depending on what happens over the next several weeks. We don't want, until we know exactly how many personnel will be left beginning July 1, we do not want to put a number in there at this moment, but that number will be updated as we move throughout this process. We also, in order to comply with new minimum wage laws, we had three pay scales that started below $12 an hour. We eliminated those pay scales, so that every pay scale now starts above $12 an hour. So, let's talk about police salaries. Each one of you have met with the police chief this past year as it relates to police salaries, the retention issues and the hiring issues that the police department is having. And this fiscal year, the starting pay for a certified police officer is $39,141. I'm proposing going next year that the starting salary be $46,000. That would be an increase of $6,859, a percentage increase of almost 17.5%. However, once you increase starting pay for police officers, you've got to look at the rest of the scales and potentially increase each one of those other scales and each one of those ranks. In order to do that, so your sergeants aren't making less than a police officer, the starting salary for a sergeant would have to go to $63,902. Starting pay for a lieutenant would then go to $67,652, and the starting pay for a captain would go to $71,402. So the average raise in fiscal year '23, if this survives the budget process, a police officer would get a raise of roughly $7,900, a 19% increase. A sergeant would get a raise of $12,800, roughly a 25% increase. A lieutenant would get a raise of $10,197, an 18% increase. A captain would get an 82, almost $8,300 raise of 12% increase. The major and the chief would only be subjected to the 5% pay increase across the board that the city would be getting. So the total cost for a police increase is $698,900. Now, we cannot talk about police without talking about fire, and I can tell you right now, the fire department does not have any retention and hiring issues like the police department has. They do not have any current vacancies at this point either, unlike the police department. And I was just notified before the meeting started tonight, we've had another police officer resign, and she's reached retirement age, and she can retire and start a whole new career, and it's something that I think will benefit her, and she'll be great at whatever she does next, because she's been a great police officer for us. So how do we also fix the fire department? Well, fixing the fire department's going to be probably a two-to-three-step process, and this proposal is just the first step in a two-to-three-step process. So currently, a starting firefighter makes $33,307 a year. And in fiscal year '23, I would propose that we move firefighters to 36,722. That's an increase of $3,415, basically a 10 and 1/4% pay increase. So how do we get there? So firefighters, you would get a 5% raise plus two steps, so the average increase would be $4,175. A sergeant would get 5% plus two steps, basically a $5,000 raise or 11%. A lieutenant would get 5% plus two steps of $6,000. A captain would get 5% plus two steps of $6,687, basically 11%. The battalion chief, the fire marshal, and the chief would only get the 5% raise as other employees get, and that would be a total increase of $274,500 for fire, the fire department. You know, I recognize that this is a little bit of disparity as compared to the police department. The city has significant budget requests this year that we have to deal with, plus we also have landfill issues that, we still have a lot of unknowns even to this day as to what the landfill's going to cost us in fiscal year '23. And I mentioned previously, it's going to be about a two- or a three-step process to fix the firefighters' pay and to get the scales over there adjusted appropriately, but I think this is a good step in the right direction to start this right now. So total increase for employee salary and benefit information will be $1.4 million. So let's talk about health insurance. Our deadline for health insurance to get those rates in back to TLC this year is March 25th. There is no opportunity to extend that deadline. I know in years past, we've had an opportunity to extend that deadline, we no longer afforded that opportunity. So in consultation with the CFO and I, we have proposed these changes to our health insurance, because, one, our health insurance increased by 10.5%, so there has to be some changes. So currently, 82% of city employees are on a city health insurance plan. There's four plans offered. You have a Key Advantage 500, comprehensive, Key Advantage 500 preventative, and the Key Advantage 1000, comprehensive and preventative. 54% of employees are on the Key Advantage 500 comprehensive plan. 3% are on the preventative plan. 36% of our employees are on the Key Advantage 1000 plan, the comprehensive plan, and 7% are on the 1000 preventative plan. So how does this impact each employee? Here is how it would impact each employee. An employee per pay period starts, for a single, if you're on the Key Advantage 500 with comprehensive dental, it's $2.50. Single plus one is $29.50 per pay period, and the family's $57. And you can look over to the right, and you can see that would be a $60 increase for a single, $708 increase for a single plus one, and a $1,368 increase for a family. Key Advantage 500 with preventative dental, once again, the single increase of $2.50, $29.50 for single plus one, and $57 for family, and it's the same dollar increase on an annual basis as well. The Key Advantage 1000 with comprehensive dental, there would be no increase for a single, a $26 increase for single plus one, and a $52 increase for family. Total increase of $624 for single plus one, and a $1,248 for family for the year. And then if you have Key Advantage 1000 with dental, it's the same numbers across the board as well. So there will be a health insurance rate increase for employees this upcoming year. So how much does that cost the city? You can see here, under your Key Advantage 500, any plan that you have under the Key Advantage 500 would be a total increase of $708 to the city, and then for Key Advantage 1000, it's an increase of $732 per employee to the city. So how does this impact our overall budget? This does not include the sheriff at this point. The general fund impact is $149,420. The solid waste disposal fund is $17,360, and the transit fund is $4,600, for a total at this point of $171,380. That does not include the sheriff's department at this point, but we will have those numbers updated as soon as we continue to work through the transition with the sheriff's department. Solid Waste Disposal Fund. Back in the spring of 2018, I stood right here at this same identical spot, and I advised council at that time that this landfill would cost the city more than the Falls ever would. And here we are today with a situation at the landfill that we do not know what the total cost will be. And my guess is, we're talking well into the nine figures before we can conclude the issues at the landfill and consider that issue resolved. So what has been the total cost of the landfill to the city? Currently, there's roughly $35 million in general obligation debt associated with that landfill. In 2016, the Audit of Public Accounts required the city to write off $22.1 million of transfers from the general fund that the solid waste disposal fund was supposed to pay back to the city over the course of the life of the landfill up through 2016, and it had to be written off simply because there was no feasible way, according to the APA, that those transfers could be paid back from the solid waste disposal fund. We currently have a net position as of June 30th of 2021 of $26.2 million, negative $26.2 million, for a total cost of $83,426,211. It's what this landfill has cost the city since 1998. That is significant. And let's talk about the transfers of the general fund since fiscal year '15. So in fiscal year '15, the city transferred almost $1 million over to the solid waste disposal fund. In fiscal year '16, $445,000. Fiscal year '17, $785,000. '18, $886,000. In '19 and '20, $567,480. And then in fiscal year '21, $106,410. And what we have projected at this point, and it is not anywhere near finished, $1.9 million transfer this upcoming year. Or actually, in fiscal year '22, I'm sorry. That does not include what I'm getting ready to show. So, budget increases at this time for the solid waste disposal fund. Additional professional services, an increase of $376,000. Contractor to maintain the gas wells, $200,000. Maintenance of machinery, $130,000. A new lease of a wheel loader, $48,000. And then $330,000 for material building and property, for a total of a little over $1 million. Currently, there is a budget deficit of almost $2.1 million in the solid waste disposal fund. So when you talk about general fund transfers, you can see that there will be at least a $2 million transfer this upcoming year. And I'd also remind council, not only do you have a $2 million potential transfer here, we're also operating at a net negative at the Falls of roughly $2.6 million. So when we all want and see things done throughout the city, we're negative $4.6 million simply because of the Falls and of the landfill. And if we did not have those two things that are dragging us down, imagine what we could do with additional $4.6 million in our general fund that we don't have right now. So, new positions in solid waste. They have requested five additional laborers. Collections has requested an additional machine equipment operator for a total of six employees. So what's next? The budget presentation, once again, April 7th. Tax rate resolution, April 12th. Advertisement of the budget on April 17th. A public hearing on April 26th. First reading of the budget ordinance on May 10th, and the second reading would be May 24th. So council, I'll leave it up to you all for questions.
Thank you for the information. Let's have some discussion.
Y'all are awful quiet. You weren't quiet the other night. You were happy.
Taking it in.
All right. Well, I guess I'll start, since nobody else is jumping in there. All right, well, we know we got a shortfall at the landfill. Those positions have got to be filled, and we got to get the, we got to get the salaries up. We got to be able to recruit and retain. And I'm actually kind of taken back with the, with the numbers I'm seeing tonight, because this is not going to be an easy task. But the bottom line is, you know, the city's got to function. We all have to just, you know, get our heads wrapped around what are our necessities and what are our wishes and wants. And until we get more revenue flowing in this city, we're going to have to really choke down those wishes and wants and keep this city on solid ground financially. We cannot retain police officers. They're leaving us. I mean, you know, there's a vast majority of reasons why police officers ain't happy in this country, and we don't need to compound the problem here locally. You know, southwest Virginia, we are the biggest city. And when we put an application out there for a police officer, we should be getting applications from every locality around us in southwest Virginia, and that is not happening. So that is an indicator there that there is something seriously wrong with our starting salaries. When we put an application in out there, and we cannot recruit an officer, that's got to be fixed. I mean, I'm not one to build departments with, with positions, because it gets very expensive very quick. But you've got to retain your departments. And you made the comment, you know, we don't have fire leaving like the police officers. We have semi-crisis on our hands in two departments in this city, and that is the landfill and the police department. And that's where we need to be focusing on, on retention and retaining, and getting those departments fully staffed back up the way that they're supposed to be and should be, and be able to keep them. I mean, we're in, we're getting into the budget cycle, we're in the budget cycle, and everybody comes and shows up and just got their hand out. Everybody, everybody wants something, which that's fine. Because there's a lot of organizations that do good in this city, but we still have to keep a reasonable mindset and not get ourselves in a position that we can't maintain and function what we need to do as the city. If it wasn't for the landfill and the Falls, we'd be whistling Dixie and just throwing a party in the city. You know, it only takes a few mistakes to really set this city back, and the city's worked hard to get to where we're at right now. And we just need to push our way through this, this budget cycle and do what we have to do, and if we don't have to do it, then we just wait for better days. I mean, we all want stuff done. We all want to fund this, fund that, do this, do that, build this. But unfortunately, the numbers tell the story, and it all can't be done. So I just caution council to go in it with the eyes wide open, knowing that there is still a lot of not seen yet. We just can't look into the future and see what the landfill's truly going to cost us to straighten it back out, and it's got to be fixed. It don't matter what that number is. It's got to be fixed. So, but the thing that we do have going for us is, this is the fiscal year that the casino is going online. So next year, we will, well, y'all will, I won't be here. Y'all will have some real numbers to look at and work with, but until then, I'm going to caution this council to be very patient.
You know, I'll, I'll jump in. I agree with a lot of, you know, what Mr. Wingard said. You know, just starting with, starting with the police. You know, I was just talking to the chief before we started, and I think, you know, cumulatively, they're down two full shifts of people, you know, and that is, that's full-on near a crisis, you know, because you're going to see increases in overtime costs because you don't have the proper staffing, and when the casino does come online later this year, there will be more calls for police. And if they're having, you know, they do a very good job right now with what they have, but if they're going to have significant trouble staffing, needing more police officers, you know, we got a problem. And it is very hard to retain police officers if, or to attract police officers by a good salary, so I think that is, that is paramount. And obviously- And obviously, the landfill, we need, you know, as I said in my budget goals, we need to have the money there and not be doing supplemental appropriations. Because I know we've transferred, what, one point nine this fiscal year so far? And it'll, it'll streamline the process a lot and make it move a lot more smoothly if that money is already in the, in the budget. I do have a question, back from your very first slide. I'll check my number. I wrote down a hundred and two thousand dollar increase for clerk of council for electronic record keeping.
Yes.
Is that, I assume that is a one-time cost to purchase the software?
You'd have to purchase the software and probably some scanning equipment with that, and that's roughly what that additional, that's what that first-year cost would be.
So will there be an ongoing licensing fee?
There would be an ongoing licensing fee, and we'll have to get some of those numbers.
Now, what?
To be quite honest, I don't think this is gonna make in the budget, so.
Okay. What, what, do we use, is it Granicus we use now, or?
But that's not an electronic record keeping system. This is for every single document that comes in with the city, gets scanned in, gets filed electronically, basically like on your desktop computer where you have files. You know, certain departments would have access to all their files. I would have access to basically any file throughout the city. And if someone wanted a document from 2017, we'd be able to go into the year 2017 under that department, look for that specific document with keyword search, and pull that document and have it available to us relatively quickly.
So this isn't just specifically for council things? This is a full?
No, this is a full-on citywide implementation.
The, a hundred and fourteen thousand to the contingency fund, is that, what was our contingency fund this fiscal year?
Eighty-five thousand.
Okay. And then the transfer of eight fifty-four, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, almost eight fifty-five to the schools, that's just to bring us up to the required local minimum?
That's based on his presentation Tuesday.
Right. And so that's, so that's four hundred over the RLM?
I don't remember the exact number, but yeah, I think it's somewhere right around there.
I got a few questions.
Sure.
We'll stick with department requests. Now, there's that slide, and then the next slide. It looks like most of these were one-time items?
Yeah, for the most part.
Okay.
Now, your IT, that's where you get into more ongoing costs with software licensing and license. That's where a lot of the cost with IT, you know, those are more ongoing-type costs with IT. I'm on the IT one, I can't see where I'm at. There we are.
Just check that. My next question, and Chief Austin's here, he can answer. If those salaries, what was proposed on that slide, how do we compare to other localities? I know Councilman Wingard mentioned that about, you know, we should be, it would be nice to be the locality of choice in southwest Virginia, that when a position comes open, people would want to come here. But how would we compare to other localities based on that?
Apparently, apparently, with the salaries, the sheriff's office, that is thirty, it's forty-two thousand, Mary is forty-one thousand, Smith County is thirty-six, that's sure.
And I'll stop him right there real quick, because there is legislation in the General Assembly right now talking about significant pay increase for sheriff's deputies. That has not been finalized yet, but I'm talking like upwards of 20% pay increase for sheriff's deputies.
It's anywhere between, that's what we're supposed to be getting, and the state police, which would put them in forty-five, forty-six, that would hire for service. But by having a forty, by having this sort of salary at forty-six, would give us the opportunity to call qualified candidates. And when I say qualified, I mean certified candidates. It is not, I'm not saying that people we just hired are not qualified, but they have to go through the academy, which puts us nine months to a year out, we're taking on the road.
So.
But to finish, your Hollins Community's college is forty-four thousand, State Police is forty-eight thousand, Avenue PD is forty-two thousand, and negotiate that depending on the number of years you can or experience you have. And right now, we're at thirty-nine thousand, I guess it is. If this doesn't include the increases that's close to coming into law, we have the.
So you mentioned the budget. Is it my understanding that there's also an increase in 599 funds that maybe could help from the state for local?
I'm unsure, I'm unsure about that.
I think I saw something from BML talking about, of course, all of that's kinda up in the air right now, but.
To, to kinda piggyback off that, I know a lot of times we compare ourselves to other localities in southwest Virginia, but do we know roughly what a police officer starting is paid in Bristol, Tennessee, Kingsport, and Johnston City?
Bristol, Tennessee, it's thirty-six, starting salary Bristol, or Kingsport is thirty-eight.
Okay.
The difference in Tennessee versus Georgia.
Okay.
And when you talk about the starting salary, is that gonna be, even if they haven't been through the academy, they'll start at that and then go through the academy? Or will that be a raise once they go through it?
They will start at thirty-three, I think it is, for the year. Thirty-three to thirty-nine of the starting salary, depending on, but, you know, once they graduate the academy, have completely built training, they're actually out on the street, that's when they go to the police.
I would love to, you know, over time, we have a reputation where people say, I want to go work in Bristol, Virginia, because they take care of us, they pay us well, and why would I go to some of these other localities when there's an opportunity in Bristol, Virginia?
And I have the same question about the fire department. So in offering a two-step increase, are we, how are we in line with other localities in our pay for the firefighters?
We're competitive.
So I know we've sorta talked about police and fire separately, and, and we've talked privately, and I've said, yeah, I think police and fire need a pay increase. Across the whole board, we've talked, is it 5% for essentially every city?
For every, that's correct.
Is that something that comes, from the state?
Well, the reason, well, it's not coming from the state, but what you have, you have disparities if your constitutional offices get a 5% pay increase. And then we have city-funded staff in each one of those departments that are only getting a 2% or a 3% pay raise, or in the years past didn't get a pay raise at all. And it just creates disparity amongst employees. So in my opinion, it's best that we attempt to match what the state does. And I would encourage this council that it's not something we do one year, or next year, or every other year. If the state's increasing pay, it's something that we need to consider and try to stay on the same path as the state.
One, one big number was the school system. They asked for a roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand increase. And I know part of that is the required local effort. I can't remember what the number was. Essentially, it was, it was like, we have to do at least, what was it, four or five hundred thousand, just to meet that minimum?
That's right.
Where that number went up. So I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that. That was kind of a, I didn't expect that number the other night.
Well, and Mr. Bradlin, correct me if I'm wrong, but that number does not take into account what we will need to do to fund the new school either. So not only are you going eight hundred and fifty-four thousand this year, whatever year we have that first payment due, you might as well increase it another million as well.
I think Ms. Jones has indicated that the hope was to keep that after this initial increase, that that would accommodate that. Did she say three, three-year, three, or something like that? But sooner or later, that will increase as well, quickly.
So we mentioned, and I think there's, well, there's a need for all employees for a raise, I mean, right now. And particularly, as you point out, to, one, for the equity of it, if you've got state-funded and local-funded, but also just to keep up with, 5% doesn't keep up with even inflation, right, in current times. So if you're gonna keep people, you, you gotta do that. And we know there's a particular need in the police, fire, and solid waste, and we've asked the question, is it comparable, is it, would that, and solid waste is a little bit different, you don't have solid waste, but would that be a wage that would be able to, to attract and retain?
We're looking at options right now for solid waste and have not settled on the exact way that we're gonna do that. I mean, I think we've had a discussion internally, and we'll hope to have a resolution to that shortly.
And while we're on solid waste, I know, I know at one point, you had mentioned trying to get, you know, a budget number for, for kinda what's coming up and what will need to be done, and the vice mayor mentioned as well. And I agree, as much as we can not to rely on supplemental appropriations, to kinda know what that is. And I know, again, the group DEQ's put together, working with Virginia Tech and the experts, it probably will be another six weeks before we hear what their recommendations are. I mean, will you be able to incorporate that into this budget, or will it?
Depends on how much it is. How much is the general fund?
Well, I mean, just any of what?
Maybe.
I mean, will you have some inkling of it that you can incorporate, but?
Based on conversations I've had with people, I don't think we're gonna hear any groundbreaking new suggestions. I'm sure there's gonna be suggestions that maybe have been mentioned but haven't really been put to the forefront, and maybe this will push them to the forefront. So, you know, I don't want people to get the idea that all of a sudden, we're gonna have a different magical answer than the answers that have been previously provided. I mean, I, I think what you're gonna hear is probably most of the experts say additional gas wells. So we might as well count on at least a million dollars for additional gas wells. I think you're gonna hear them say, close the chimneys. You know, we've got some potential estimates from Draper Aiden on the cost of closing those chimneys, and that's close to a million dollars, maybe a little bit more. And that's no guarantee that works. So that, I mean, there's a significant, significant cost that we know that we're gonna have, and, you know, we're, we're in the budget process now, we are preparing for a lot of those costs. It's just, to say that we can cover everything this year, I can't tell you that that can be done. Because we're not, we're not gonna know, the final report, I think, is not supposed to be out till April 25th.
And that's why, you know, I know it's, it's hard to, the timing doesn't work out. But by the same token, if it's a process that takes eighteen, twenty months, whatever, you know, a lot of the, you're gonna have design, engineering and stuff in the first part of the next fiscal year, and then you might get into the actual harder costs with implementation. But you won't, it might straddle over two fiscal years, which again, we need to be preparing for and accounting for as well.
If we did everything that I think was required in fiscal year 23, I think that number is right at thirteen million, based on Draper Aiden's estimates. I'm sorry, a little bit less than that, but.
And then my last question is, is about the insurance rates?
Yeah.
Will, you said you have to have that, I forget, sometime towards the end of March?
March 25th, that's correct.
Will we vote on that at our next meeting?
I think you only voted on it, it seems like, in spring of 18. I don't think we voted on it since then. I think we've just made it part of the budget process.
Okay. That's why, I remember doing it both ways. That's why I didn't know. And, you know, that, again, I would just, and I made that comment before, but, but as much as you can, try to, to keep, you know, with, with the cost of everything else going up, of course, insurance goes up, but sometimes if, if you can't give people everything in terms of a monetary salary, that insurance is a benefit that does have a tangible value, especially, I think, to the people that are single plus one and families, to keep those costs down would, would really help right now. So as much of that as we could absorb, I would be in favor of that.
I have a, let me circle back to the sheriff's department. So I know you, you said that this is not, a lot of these numbers, you say this does not include the sheriff's department. So say the, say the jail shuts down, and we're left with eight comp board-funded positions at the sheriff's department, which includes the, the major, the sheriff, and the admin. Then there are five sheriff's deputies. I know I have had discussions with people in the sheriff's department who say that they'll need more deputies, which would not be comp, you know, comp board-funded. What's the potential, and have you had discussions about how much we would, if we'd be able to fund additional sheriff's deputies for them?
Yes, we're, we've got a plan in place to fund additional deputies.
Had a question. There was a one point four million dollar amount for total salaries increases? So that includes everyone's 5% plus the police and fire?
It does not include sheriffs, though.
Does not include sheriff. Does that include that there was a hundred and seventy thousand around for health insurance? Is that included in salary and benefits?
Yes.
In that one point?
No, it's not, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So the one point four is just salary?
The salary.
Okay.
Not health insurance?
Mr. Eads, I'm gonna correct myself. I pulled the spreadsheet up from Draper Aiden for the 24-month plan. In fiscal year 23, you were right, it was thirteen point six million.
Thought it was.
He was.
And then on the bank's service charges?
Yes.
The seventy-eight thousand, is that, that's just where we switch to a new bank, and that's a one-time fee?
It's a monthly recurring fee. You get charged monthly.
Monthly, oh, gotcha.
For those banking services. Our previous bank, the fees, I don't think there were any fees associated with it. However, we went out to RFP this past year, and based on the responses, there were gonna be fees across the board, no matter which bank we went with.
I'm sorry for asking again. So there's the one point four, does that include just current employees, or does that include the, on the other list, there was twenty and a half full-time employees that were asked for? Does that include that number? Just current, okay. So additional positions would be additional?
And I'm sorry if I wasn't clear about that. The cost of that increase is the salary and the fringe related to that, which is the, the increase for the salary plus FICA and the new VRS on, on the increase, does not include the health insurance increase? That's listed as a separate item?
Okay.
I have a question for, for the CFO. So just now, you said the, the Draper Aiden suggested, I'm sorry, we're all jumping around on you, I'm so sorry. But you said that the salary or the cost for the Draper Aiden suggested fixes for FY23, if we implemented everything, would be thirteen point six million dollars? So you said, you said that was a 24-month, so, so do you know the cost for what they're saying, if we implement everything for FY24 would be?
Sixteen million.
Say again.
Sixteen. I think.
The total cost overall were sixteen point one million. Fiscal year 22, we're gonna bear one point six seven nine of that. Thirteen point six million is in fiscal year 23, and a piece, a small piece, mostly consulting expenses, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year 24, for the total Mr. Eads is referring to, sixteen point one million.
Okay.
Does that also include the things to put us in compliance with the consent order from BVU?
It would. It would.
Okay. I got, I got a little bit more.
Okay, go ahead.
So, back to, hold on. The mayor interrupted me, I lost my place. Oh, back to your, your first slide where you were talking about increases to the city attorney?
Yes.
Fund. About the ongoing legal expenses we have?
That's correct.
The only way I can ask that, is that enough, in your mind, for knowing where we are with that? Is that enough money?
At least for the current pending litigation, I think it is. Or for the current litigation we're in. As far as pending litigation, that would not be enough if Bristol, Tennessee would choose to sue us.
That's where I was going. And I think staying, no, maybe not on this slide. We were talking about, you talked about an increase in salaries to the library.
Here it is. Public library, fourth line at the bottom.
Yeah, okay. So I know that a previous council member had said that if, once you increase the funding for the library, you can't decrease it, and I've never been able to find that in state code. So, we have not, have we increased the library salaries before on our side like this?
I don't think that we have, other than just the typical salary increase that's been given across the board. I don't think we've increased the library funding since I've been city manager that I'm aware of. If it has, it's just been minor.
So that, so that number, is that above and beyond a 5% increase, or is that their portion of a 5% increase?
That includes what they would ask Bristol, Virginia to fund of the insurance increase and a 5% increase as well.
And you said, "Ask Bristol, Virginia," so it's split 50/50?
I don't think it's split 50/50, but, but it is split.
That's kind of what I was getting at. I didn't, I, the way this, this implied to me that this was separate from?
Maybe it is split 50/50.
From the rest.
I didn't think it was 50/50.
I don't know. I don't think it is. Because Bristol, Tennessee, right now, provides more funding to the library than Bristol, Virginia.
And I think I have one other question. On new employee requests, we were talking about, down there at the bottom, community development planner. Mr. Dietrich has two roles right now?
That's correct.
And he is the city planner and?
Interim community development director.
Interim community development director. So this, so this will take the, he won't be doing the city planner anymore with this role, if this is?
I'd prefer not to discuss personnel issues like that, but we can talk offline.
Can we discuss it later? Okay.
So, why you got that, the custodial, is that being contracted out right now?
Which one?
The building maintenance, two custodians?
That is not being contracted out, no. We have, we have at-work employees. I think we have one city full-time, and then, what is it, three, two, two at-work?
And make, basically make those two full-time, or city full-time, is that?
No, I think that's an addition to the, even the at-work.
Okay.
All right, well, since that's back up there, I'm going to go on record saying that there is a, a department that's critical in this sys, in this city. I mean, we're sitting here as, as a city, and we don't have an assistant city manager. We have a city manager and a city attorney under the same hat, and I would like to see a city attorney on that list.
And we will consider that, based on recommendations from council. This was, this is strictly department request.
Okay, all right. I mean, this city hasn't had an assistant city manager since, what was his name? Drew?
Trivik, Andrew Trivik, yeah. So it's been?
That's been, that's been seven.
Yeah, five and a half.
Been longer than that, because I've been on this council for six years.
He didn't leave until the end of '16, first part of '17. So it's been five, maybe a little over five right now.
I do not recall him being here when I came on in '16.
He was. While this is up here, I asked the Chief, Chief Austin, adding one dispatch, how many are currently?
We currently have 11, one part-time, and the one we're adding is going from, we're longing to add, take the part-time to full-time.
Okay.
It's not actually, and we're, I'm not sure of the numbers, but it's not getting different, so we're, we're part-time and semi-part-time, adding full-time.
Well, I was going to say, I don't have any further questions myself. I think this is a lot of information for us to digest and discuss. Just throwing that out there, if anyone else has any questions or, or comments, but I, I don't think I do.
I think I do have one more question. You said that the cost for the regional jail would be 3.1 million?
Yes.
Is that, is that the number that they've given us, or is that just what we're still estimating, or are they, are they pretty clear on that now?
They had provided that, and I added to that the cost of 50,000 for vans, and as part of the deal, the agreement, not the deal, the city had to fund two, two vans, and I had obtained a number of about 35,000, but I put 50 just in case in the budget. So that was provided by the regional jail, based on what our billing will start as of July.
Okay. All right, well?
Can you make sure we?
Yeah, we'll get your copy.
It's a lot, look, look through, tried to take notes, but not very well.
We appreciate all your work and everyone being here this evening. So if we have no further comments or, or questions, this was the only item on our agenda, we'll go ahead and adjourn.